Welcome to this meeting of Dundee City Council's Children, Families and Communities Committee, which is being held remotely in terms of section forty-three of the Local Governance in Scotland Act 2003. All members in attendance are able to fully participate in the meeting which is being recorded. Should any member need to leave the meeting for any reason, can they please use the chat to advise of this? If a member loses their connection, they should make every effort to rejoin the meeting. But if this is not possible, the committee services officer will note their absence for the remainder of the meeting. If you have to leave the meeting due to a declaration of interest, you must remain out of the meeting until invited back in. Would all members please mute their microphones when not speaking to avoid background noise and turn off any smart speakers? Please start the meeting with your camera on, your face will appear on the screen when you are speaking. If your connection is poor, you may wish to turn off your camera and see if this improves matters. If this doesn't help, you may wish to quickly leave the meeting and rejoin. If you wish to raise a point of order, ask a question, speak on any item or move a motion or amendment, please use the chat when the relevant item is called. The convener will then invite you to speak. Would members of the press and public please not post messages in the chat? Where items are for noting or where there has been no disagreement expressed, the convener will call for any member who has a contrary view to indicate this through the chat, otherwise the item will be agreed. Please would members not use the chat for any other purposes, as those joining the meeting by telephone cannot see the chat and therefore will not be able to follow the debate. Although we are operating in a different way, this is still a formal meeting of the committee and the required standards of behaviour and discussion are the same as in a face-to-face meeting. Standing orders will apply to the proceedings and the terms of the councillor's code of conduct will also apply in the normal way. Does any member have any queries regarding this procedure? There are no queries, convener, so I'll now ask the committee services officer to take a roll call for the minute. Thank you.
Thank you. As indicated, I will now take a roll call for the minute and I would ask that members confirm their presence when I call their name. Convener?
I'm here.
Councillor Alexander?
I'm also here.
Councillor Anderson?
I'm here.
Lord Provost?
Present.
Deputy Lord Provost?
Present.
Bailey Dawson?
I'm here.
Councillor Elnacla?
Hi, I'm here.
Councillor Flynn?
Good evening, I'm here.
Councillor Lynn?
Present.
Bailey Roberts?
Good evening, I'm here.
Councillor Rome?
Good evening, present.
Bailey Soares?
Yes, I'm here.
Councillor Short?
Here.
Councillor Smith?
I'm here.
Councillor Tuland?
Hi, I am here.
Bailey Keenan?
Present.
Councillor Crookshank?
Present.
Councillor Finnegan?
Evening, present.
Councillor McHugh?
Present.
Councillor McCarvin?
Present.
Councillor Malone?
I'm definitely here, I'm just trying to remember where I am, but I'm here.
Thank you. Councillor Skellin?
Hi, I'm here.
Councillor Shears?
Evening, present.
Bailey Wright?
Present.
Bailey MacPherson?
Hi, good evening, present.
Councillor Coleman?
Good evening.
Councillor Creighton?
Hi, I'm here.
Councillor Duncan?
Here.
Apologies have been received for Bailey Scott. Mrs McFie?
Present.
Thank you. Mrs Little? I'll mark his absent. Mr Abu Bakar? I'll also mark his absent. Mr Gibson?
Here.
Thank you. Ms Barkley?
Hello, I'm here.
Mrs Javid? I'll mark his absent. Mr Anderson McGinnis? Also mark his absent. And Miss Orchardson?
I'm here.
Thank you, and that concludes the roll call.
Thank you, Elaine. I see in the chat, Councillor Alexander, you wish to come in to make a brief comment before we start the agenda, so I'll bring you in at this point.
Thanks very much, convener, for your indulgence and I'll apologise to the member in advance, but this is the first time that we've been together in terms of a committee meeting in order to do this. But I think it's worth recognising the fantastic accolade that Bailey Wright recently received at the LGIU awards. And I think it's worthy of putting on note at the start of this committee meeting how incredible that is and how worthy that recognition is. And Helen, I'm sorry, I didn't tell you in advance I was going to do this, but I think it's right that as twenty-nine elected members, we recognise, or twenty-eight tonight, we recognise your contribution over more than forty years. And I know, having sat next to you at those awards, that you were really taken back and surprised by that win, I suppose, and that recognition. But the rest of us, I think, were not surprised in the slightest. So I really just wanted to start the committee by putting my thanks and recognition for those significant years of service on record at the start of the committee meeting. And can I perhaps suggest and ask again with your indulgence, convener, that we all come off mute to thank and to recognise Helen's contribution in the normal way with a round of applause? Thank you, convener.
John, can I say thank you? And I want to thank Lynne and Georgia for their nomination, which they put in while I was on holiday. I wouldn't normally seek any recognition for what I do, because I do what I do, but they took into consideration my trade union work, which really goes back a long way as well. And if I was going to have any award, I was certainly pleased to pick that one up, but it was a bit of a shock. But I think the good news about it was that you got yours as well, and that's Dundee recognised for the leader and for the... I can't see myself as a lifetime legend. And when I was asked, I said... They said, "What did you think of being a legend?" I said, "Well, I don't really see myself as a legend." And the thing about it is, I'm just happy that I survived it all. And I'm still surviving it, but I wouldn't change it and I would do it all again. But thank you very much. Thank you.
No, and I think certainly echo the comments that John's just said, I think it was certainly a very well-deserved award. And, you know, we all know the great work that you've done for your community and for the city as well throughout those years. And so it was certainly very well deserved. Bailey MacPherson, I see that you wish to come in, so I'll bring you in now.
Thank you, convener. Can I just add on behalf of our group, our pleasure at seeing the recognition of Helen. Lifetime legend is exactly the correct accolade for Helen, because our level of commitment over some forty-three years to her community and indeed to the city as a former Lord Provost, but also social work convener and in so many other guises, Helen has very much served our city with distinction over more than four decades. It's appreciated, Helen, by all of us, and we're delighted that you've been so recognised. Thank you, convener.
Thank you, but I'm getting embarrassed now.
I think the embarrassment is just going to continue, because I think Bailey Keenan wants to come in as well.
Yeah, I'll come in and see what I could do to give Helen a red face. No doubt she'll get me back. Very capable councillor and has proved that over the years in delivering for our community. I think the work that Helen does, you know, in particular for elderly people in the city, you know, is just something that she's been committed to for many, many years. And indeed, in her own community and the fundraising that she's done over the years. I know that Helen's always been very good at, don't tell anybody, here's what I put in type of thing. You know, she has been the one that's made the cakes and contributed endlessly towards fundraising within our local community. And I think that she's well deserved in receiving the reward. Big accolade right across the whole of Scotland. But for someone that's managed to give forty-odd years, you know, it is really well deserved. People have come out time and time again and vote for Helen, and it just shows that they have obviously put their faith in her in delivering for her and her families. And no doubt, over that years, she'll have come across dealing with sort of grandchildren of the people that she was dealing with as parents at the time. So, you know, the generations flow on and Helen stays there as a stewardship, helping people in the city. Not only just, you know, our community, but the various organisations that she's committed to over the years and delivering support for them. Well done, Helen.
Thank you, Bailey Keenan. Yeah, and I think the final comment is going to be from Councillor Short.
It's one of the shortest comments you'll ever have. If you can't see it, you can't be it. And since I was at school, Helen has been there and shown us the way. So thank you, Helen. And that's why myself and Georgia thought it was very appropriate to put you forward for this. So thank you.
Well, thank you so much. Thank you.
So thank you all for your comments. And again, well done, Helen, on the award. Certainly a very well-deserved accolade. And I couldn't think of anything more fitting to get it. So congratulations. Elaine, can we now move on to the agenda, please?
Thank you, convener. Item one, declaration of interest. Can I ask if any members have any declarations to the agenda as it stands?
Okay, I'm not seeing MD wishing to come in.
Okay, item two is pupil religious and teacher representation on the Children, Families and Communities Committee, and this is for approval.
Okay, so fortunately we only have two of the three, oh, I don't think, three has made it tonight, but to Alicia and to David. Welcome to the committee. Looking forward to hearing from you and your contributions tonight and as we go through other committees in due course. So just wanted to welcome you both to the committee. And with that, can this be agreed? Yep, so it has been agreed, so welcome to you both. Okay, Elaine?
Item three, progress updates, senior phase attainment twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three. You have the report before you.
Okay, I have the report in front of me. I think Georgia, you just got in there first, so Councillor Crookshank, I'll pass over to yourself.
Thank you, convener. I understand that you have a high number of S4 leavers in Dundee schools and this impacts on our results. Can you tell us what schools are doing to encourage more pupils to stay on into S5 and S6? Thank you.
No, thank you for that question. So I'll first of all pass over to Mrs May, who may wish to pass on elsewhere, but I'll start off with the director.
Okay, thank you, convener. And thank you, Councillor Crookshank, for the question. It is indeed a focus of our work. But I will pass to our chief education officer, Paul Fleming, on the call to answer the detail. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councillor Crookshank, for the important question. And we do have a high number of S4 leavers and almost all of these do go on to positive destinations, most of which go on to and study at college, Dundee United College in particular. So many of these do go on to positive destinations, but as you rightly point out, this does impact them when we just look at our schools' attainment data. So every one of our schools is working on and seeing what they can do to improve the staying-on rate, which does vary school by school. But some of the key actions is about making sure that we have learner pathways for each individual and they understand coming into school, what subjects they can take and where they can go with their future career. Schools are also making sure that they work with families to, again, just to change that culture and to show that those young people who do stay on at school, as you will see from the report, looking at just our S6 based on S6 data, they do very well. So each school has individual plans related to staying-on rates. And as a city, we seconded a head teacher for a day week to look at some key improvement actions that can help improve the staying-on rates from S4 into S5, but also S5 into S6, where that is the right for that young person at the right time.
Thank you for that, Mr Fleming. Councillor Crookshank, are you happy with that response?
Yeah, I'm happy with that response. Thank you.
Okay, Councillor Coleman?
Thank you, Mr convener. The information at five point two shows that senior phase literacy and numeracy performance at SCQF level four or better in twenty-twenty-three is exactly the same as in twenty-nineteen. It appears that the only reason the performance gap with our virtual comparator has declined is that the virtual comparator performance has dropped back. Given that our virtual comparator had an eighty-nine percent achievement level in twenty-nineteen, our officers confident that our current eighty-four percent attainment can be better towards that sort of level in the next few years, given the efforts being made in our secondary schools across the city.
Okay, thank you for that question. Again, I'll pass to officers. So again, I don't know whether Mr Fleming, you want to come in or Mrs May, you want to come in first?
Happy with Mr Fleming coming in, convener. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councillor Coleman, for the question. Yes, so during this period where lives of all of our young people and families have been impacted by COVID, you will see that, as you point out, our virtual comparator's performance, albeit higher, has declined. Performance in Dundee has remained steady, and of course, we would want that to improve, but we've got a building block there in terms of remaining steady. It is hard to compare your new results, as the report says, but there is some merit in comparing twenty-twenty-three to twenty-nineteen, given their similar exam results, if you like, or the way the exams have been accredited. And we are confident that one of the things that Councillor Crookshank pointed out was the impact of the S6 based on S4s of the number of leavers. But when we look at year-on-year data, so when we look at our S4s based on our S4s of our virtual comparators, our S5 based on our S5s of virtual comparators, and our S6, as is included in the report, we are confident we will see an improving performance in literacy and in numeracy with the actions that we spelt out in this report and other similar reports as highlighted in the opening paragraph, Councillor Coleman.
Okay, Councillor Coleman, you happy with that response?
That was great, thank you.
Okay, Councillor Malone?
Yeah, thank you, convener. Obviously, everybody in this chamber supports the hard work that's being done in schools by the academic staff, the support staff, and by those wraparound services that are provided to try and ensure that every child gets the educational opportunity they're entitled to. I shared Councillor Coleman's maybe questions a little bit about the performance indicators, but there is a bigger set of performance indicators coming, and that is the PISA standards. And I'm not suggesting that that's relevant to this committee now, but obviously we'll get a report coming forward that explains whether or not from the last PISA results there has been significant improvement or otherwise. Let's hope for the former.
Sorry, I'm trying to get myself off mute. Thank you for that comment. I'm not sure if there was a question there, but I think, you know, I agree with you. We'll obviously that report will come to committee in due course and it'll give us a bigger picture as well. And we can see how that all kind of all hands out. So certainly when we see that committee, I'm sure there'll be a few questions at that point as well. But with that, I don't see any other comments, so can this report be agreed? Okay, okay, Elaine?
Item four is mental health and wellbeing support services. You have the report before.
Okay, Councillor Creighton, I see you wish to come out with a question.
Thank you. Thank you, convener. The pilot with Penumbra to provide self-harm support services is really welcome. And I think we can all agree on that. I think we discussed that within our own group. And I note that service arrangements are established in one cluster group. And I'm just wondering when all the cluster groups across Dundee will have service arrangements in place. And I'll say I appreciate that it is a pilot, but how long is the pilot due to last? And how long will the kind of long-term sustainability of the service provision be achieved and time scales on that?
Okay, thank you for that. Again, I'll start off with Mrs May and you may wish to pass to the law officers.
Yes, again, thanks, convener, and thank you for the question. And I'm going to pass to Mr Fleming first, because it will be about ruling this out across all our school clusters. We also have manager, an inclusion manager, ASN manager on the call. But so Paul might wish to just double-check there, but I'll pass to Paul first. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you very much again for the important question, Councillor Creighton. You're right in the sense that this is a pilot and it is about ascertaining the results of the pilot in terms of the efficacy of the pilot and the impact before. But as with all pilots of this nature, it is about using the learning to see then, can we rule this programme out in terms of the impact and is that possible? I don't have the detail about how long the pilot will last, but I can get that detail afterwards and provide you with the deadline of the pilot, councillor.
Okay, Councillor Creighton, you happy with that? And we'll make sure that information is passed to the committee.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you, Mr Fleming. Thank you, convener.
Okay, Councillor Crookshank?
Thank you, convener. It's reassuring to see the great work going on to support our children and young people in our schools. But can you tell me what more could be done or you would like to be done if you had more resources? Thank you.
Mrs May, I may start with you again. Pass to officers as you may wish. I mean, it's always a great question. What would you like to do if there was more finances?
Yeah, wouldn't we always need more finances? I'm going to pass this one to Glenn Lloyd, because this is an area that I know Glenn's been looking at across our team, so I'll ask Glenn to answer that question. Thanks, convener.
Thank you, convener, and thank you for your comments and your question, Councillor Crookshank. And I would say really support to parents and carers of children and young people. As you can see in the report, there's a vast range of initiatives that we're introducing, partly in relation to new services and partly in relation to building the capacity and confidence of the existing workforce in relation to children and young people. But we need to build on that and develop whole-family approaches with a sharp focus on support to parents and carers. We're already doing a lot in that regard, so we have an initiative, for instance, with Celsius. We're doing a lot in relation to early years, including now in relation to some new initiatives from the whole family wellbeing funding. But going forwards, we need to continue with that, particularly in relation to parents and carers with a substance use problem and parents, carers who have experienced domestic abuse. So building on that with whole-family approaches, I would say in summary.
Thanks very much, Glenn, for your...
Yeah, it would be helpful. I told myself off mute before I tried to bring you back in, but if you're happy with that, thank you for that. Councillor Malone, you have a comment?
Yeah, I've got no questions really to ask about the report. What I do know, well, what I have got at the moment is some of the circumstances that Glenn mentioned with some constituents who are going to be in touch soon, and I'll get in touch with Glenn about that. But there are some real hardships out there. And I think we all recognise that, because we all get people coming to our surgeries and saying these are real hardships. And the reality is that these hardships are likely to get more severe. As we go through winter and we go through the savings or cuts that are coming our way. But I would just like to support Glenn in the work he does, because I think he does a fantastic job. His team do a fantastic job in what are very, very difficult circumstances. So Glenn, I will be in touch with you about a case that's causing me a great deal of concern.
Well, thank you for those comments, Councillor Malone, and I absolutely agree that the work that Glenn and his team do is fantastic. And one of the things, I think, you know, we talked about, and you know, certainly put in the press release that went out for myself, is that to try and encourage people to come forward, because there is support there. And often, young people and families don't realise what the support is and where they can get it. So, you know, certainly happy for our elected members to be passing on to the team, any constituents that come forward to you, but also helpful to get the information out there of what's available for families and the support that is out there. Because, you know, we certainly want to be trying to help as many of them as we possibly can. And the more that come forward, the more that we can help. So, but thank you for your comment. With that, is there any, is there somebody else? Is that report agreed? Okay, so Elaine?
Okay, convener. Item five, Tayside Plan for Children, Young People and Families, Annual Report twenty-twenty-two to twenty-three and Three-Year Plan for twenty-twenty-three to twenty-six. You have the report before you.
Okay, I think Councillor Crookshank, you were first, so I'll pass yourself.
Thank you, convener. I'm getting good at my fast finger now. I welcome this report and I read it with interest and gives opportunities to the great progress in the joint work across Tayside. The RIC review included feedback from the OECD, which is an organisation for economic cooperation and development. And they do international benchmarking and all sorts of things, including education system. And they said that RICS were working well, so how is this plan to be delivered now that the Cabinet Secretary has announced that funding will be cut next year and there will be no more funding after twenty-twenty-five? Thank you.
Okay, thanks for the question. I'll pass to Mrs May in the first instance, but before I do that, just to make the comment that, you know, obviously the Cabinet Secretary has made an announcement, and as yet, we don't know what the details behind that announcement are. So certainly there's a lot, there'll be a lot of work going on to continue with the plan and continue with what we seek to do for young people and their families, not just in Dundee but across the region. But until we know exactly what the details are behind that plan and what may or may not replace RICS, then, you know, we're still a little bit in the dark. But I'll pass over to Mrs May, and if there's anything that she wishes to add.
Okay, thank you, convener, and thanks to Councillor Crookshank for the question. And yeah, we've collaborated where we have the greatest impact and also to reduce duplication. So we are a commitment to regional work and we'll continue. However, at this point in time, we do not have any detail around the tapering of the funding and therefore we can't really be clear about the scope of the work going forward, especially into twenty-four, twenty-five. And so there'll be lots of conversations happening in the background. I'll be working closely with the directors in Perth and Angus councils to look at scenario planning beyond this funding. But right just now, I couldn't give you exact details about the scope of that work going forward, because we don't have details of the funding tapering. And so that's why we added that recommendation into the list there, that to bring back a report in six months' time, when all of that hopefully will be clearer. Thank you, convener.
Okay, Councillor Crookshank, are you happy with that response?
Yeah, I'm happy with that response, convener, and I look forward to the report in six months' time, where we'll get some clarification on this. Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Bailey MacPherson, you're next.
Yeah, thanks, convener. And following on from that, what I would be really grateful is if officers could keep us updated, rather than just getting a report in six months' time. My concern here is that the very good work, and this is a fulsome report showing a great deal of achievement in a regional capacity, if you like. And my concern is, you know, if you don't have the eight-hundred-and-one-thousand tonnes worth of funding and that falls off a cliff, the work just no longer happens. And it's the worst of central government short-terminism, to be perfectly frank. So what I would be grateful is if officers could give a commitment, as they are further updated by the Cabinet Secretary for Education and Skills going forward, if they could keep members of the committee updated as to any information regarding the tapering of funding or if the cliff edge of funding, which is what I really fear in this, notwithstanding the fact, obviously, we will get a report in six months' time.
Yeah, I mean, I'm more than happy to commit on behalf of officers that we will do that, ensure that members are kept updated as and when we know more information. As I said, we're kind of in the hands of the Cabinet Secretary the moment of when she announces that to Parliament. But as soon as we do and we have some ideas of what that means for us, then we will update you. And I see Mrs May's nodding. I don't know if you want to add anything. I'm just happy to.
No, just to say happy to commit to providing progress update as and when. Thank you.
Okay, just checking. I don't see MDL wishing to come in. Have I missed MD note? So can this report be agreed? Okay. And Elaine?
That concludes Children, Families and Communities.
Yeah, no, so thank you all for your attendance this evening. We'll go back to Roger for the next committee. Thank you, convener. The next committee is the Neighbourhood Regeneration, Housing and Estate Management Committee.
Thank you very much, Roger. Veronica, over here, please.
Thank you, convener. Item one, declaration of interest. Are there any declarations from members?
A few seconds. I don't see any notifications, so we'll just take that as it is. Veronica, please, move on.
Thank you. Item two, preparing a local housing strategy for the period twenty-twenty-four to twenty-twenty-nine. You have this note for your information.
Just a note, I recommend the council is required to prepare its LHS every five years and sets its strategy, priorities and plans for delivery of housing and related services going forward. Things this will take place up to, sorry, summer next year.
Things this will take place up to November, sorry, summer next year.
Comes from McHugh, I see. What question?
Thank you. This note reminds us that the council has a statutory duty to consult with a wide range of local residents and tenants in communities of interest in relation to the strategy. What format will the consultation take in line with the council's commitment to inclusive communications? Specifically, how will we gather the views of tenants and residents who are not online? And how will we ensure that communities of interest such as homeless people, people with disabilities and those who may require sheltered accommodation are reached as part of these surveys and seminars?
Thank you for the question, Elaine. Would you like to come in on that?
Yeah, thank you, Convena, and thank you councillor McHugh for your question. I think it's a really valid question. I think it's really important that we reach out to as many groups as possible and as many different ways as possible to ensure that we can have a collective view that can be reported back through committee. This is a lengthy process. The intention is that this would come back to committee at the tail end of 2024. And the consultation will be extensive over a number of months. So we'll be pulling together the, the range of methodologies that we'll be using. And we're happy to share that with elected members. And also we would welcome elected members' comments on any groups that we haven't reached out to that they feel should be and could be included. So happy to have that conversation with councillor McHugh and any other elected member to make sure that we have as, as wide a consultation strategy as possible.
Thanks, Elaine. Councillor McHugh, you, you okay with that?
Yes, thank you. Thanks, Elaine.
No, thanks for the question. I see no other questions, so we'll just take that as agreed. Thank you. Veronica?
Item three, Housing Asset Management Strategy 2023 to 2028. This is for your approval.
Thank you. The Housing Asset Management Strategy is an asset categorically planned structure to be read in conjunction with overarching corporate asset management plan itself, which provides strategic context for the management of council assets. Whilst recognising the challenges, aim of the Housing Asset Management Strategy is to ensure that assets are managed effectively and efficiently, providing safe and secure accommodation for tenants and service users and that they comply with the regulatory requirements and support current and future service needs. Also, the new Housing Asset Management Strategy replaces the previous version, highlights the considerable progress we've made in regeneration areas, including, for example, Whitfield, Hilton, Lochie and Mill of Mainz. So if I see a question from councillor Duncan, please.
Yeah, thanks, Convena. A note on page 12, the situation that the housing service still uses the East District Housing Office for staff, although it no longer has a facility where actual members of the public can just drop in. Whereas the West District offices are used by other council services. My question here was, can I ask if all the capital costs in building the West District office were met by the housing element of the capital plan? The reason for asking is I'd be quite concerned if our tenants picked up the, the tab for the bill in full, but it's no longer being used by core H R A services.
Yeah, I'll bring in Elaine on that one.
Thank you very much, Convena, and thank you councillor Duncan for the question. Yes, I can confirm that both of the offices were built through the, the, the housing revenue account and have traditionally housed tenants, tenant delivery services. Where the wider use has been considered, there is a corresponding examination of any recharge that might be required back to services that are supporting, supported through those offices.
Thank you. So that answers your question. Councillor Duncan?
Yeah, I think so. Although, I mean, if, if Elaine would maybe sort of give us fuller details of why that be, I'd appreciate that.
Okay, I'm sure that could be provided. Thank you. Councillor McHugh, please. See you. Question?
Yes, thank you. I actually have two questions. I hope you'll allow them. I'll start with my first one anyway. Under stock condition on page 11 of the bundle, the report shows that less than 2% of our existing housing stock was built after 1982, 195 out of 12,500 units. And the, the report also tells us that all properties included in the capital programme and void properties receive a house condition survey and that the council will commission additional surveys of all stock types. Can officers clarify the extent of these additional surveys? I, I, I'm, I'm asking this in relation to the age of some of our stock. What is the process for selecting houses to be included? And is there any information on how many surveys, surveys will be undertaken and the associated costs?
Now, that's a very good question because there's three quarters of our stock are over 60 year old, so it's very relevant. Louise, you'd probably be the best one for this.
Yeah, thank you for that and thank you for the question. And in terms of the building condition surveys, so as highlighted within the strategy, approximately 1,200 voids come through per annum, of which 300 tend to be approximate anyway, recurring voids. So what that's looking at is around 900 new surveys that we carry out as part of our relay process to look at asset information and to update those building condition surveys. But what we know is that there are a number of property types and in areas which won't come through that void process. So the next stage in terms of the asset strategy is to look at commissioning building condition surveys and for those kind of properties. So we'll be looking at a sample across the city, across different areas and across the different property types to then undertake stock condition surveys to update our asset information. And what I don't have to share with committee at this stage is the cost or the numbers of those additional surveys on top of the work we do within services. But that's something that I can bring back and share with members once, once confirmed.
Thank you for that, sir. Detailed response. Hopefully that answers your question. Dorothy, do you have a, not the second?
Yes, it does. It does. Thank you. Can, can I give my second question?
Yes, please. Please do. Yeah.
Under Planned Capital Works on page 13 of the bundle, it's reported that provisional capital budgets will reduce significantly from 22.5 million to just over 15 million for the following two years. How will this affect our programme of replacements for roofs, kitchens and bathrooms, windows and doors, for example?
Yeah, thank you for that. Louise, there's a question I asked myself today, so I'll let you go ahead and answer it again.
No, thank you for that. So in terms of the capital plan, as members will be aware, we undertake a review of our capital plan annually. And what members will recall from previous is that there was a significant underspend in our capital plan on the back of COVID-19 due to delayed works, of which what we've seen is a number of those programmes move forward, which then increase the projected spend. As committee will be aware, annually, we're undertaking that review and our updated capital plan will be coming back to committee before the end of the financial year. But essentially what we will make sure is we'll part of the stock condition survey, but part of our asset management database is to look at stock condition, predetermined life cycles as well as information that comes through our repair service to be able to determine what works we carry out and where and the associated costs of doing so. And so at this stage, I don't anticipate all that, albeit that it's showing a reduction in spend that it will have a detrimental effect in terms of stock condition. And a lot of what's contained within the 24, 25 and the year preceding the current year is really a catch up on what we've not been able to do at that period, as I mentioned during COVID.
Thank you again. Dorothy, is that, answer your question?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Louise.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Bailey Keenan, please.
Yeah, Louise, you, you might not be able to share too much of this, but you, you just mentioned that out of the 1,200 voids per year, three of them are, 300 of them are recurring. So I'm wondering if you could share with committee why there is that number, sort of appearing time and time again? And as to whether there is an issue that, that we need to address. You know, given that, you know, with 7,000 people on a waiting list, hearing that there is 300 houses just year on year kind of appear on the wait, on the list or people are leaving them. Be good to have an understanding of why that is. What are the surveys saying if we're surveying these houses? And, you know, what can we do longer term to address that, given that, you know, we, we bring these houses up to a lettable standard before they're offered? Must be extremely costly to keep that 300.
Yeah, thanks again. Bailey Keenan for the question. Louise, please.
Yeah, I mean, happy to bring that back in that, that obviously at our housing best value review group we do undertake a review in terms of void and void turnover. I think when you look at tenancy sustainment, so we sit just shy of 90% of, in terms of our sustainment rate. So naturally we will have that turnover of properties for people moving for a variety of reasons. The figures that I'm quoting are in approximate of what's recurring in terms of property types and areas. So essentially what I'm saying is that the information for building condition surveys, 300 of which we, we, we see year on year, the same kind of property and information coming through. The 900 odd is, is the new, but we could give a bit more breakdown around turnover of stock and types and happy to bring that back through the housing best value review group.
I mean, I'm not on the housing best value review group and don't really want to join another meeting. So if that information could be shared to the wider councillors, then we could start to ask questions and perhaps draw down a wee bit with that housing review group.
No, I guess presented to that, as you know, so we'll wait till that details come out with that taking on this meeting, that would be handy. And maybe Louise will pass on the information from then. Okay, thank you. I see no further questions, so just move on, please. Veronica?
Item number four, Housing Energy Efficiency and Net Zero Strategy 2023 to 2027. This is for your approval.
Thank you. I think it's an excellent report and the housing and energy efficiency and net zero strategy here is setting a long term plan to retrofit our stock, taking a fabric first approach whilst also decarbonising heat and improving energy efficiency. The strategy builds upon the progress achieved to date, which includes investment of over 59 million to deliver any, sorry, deliver energy efficiency improvements, including external wall insulation programme to over 5,000 council, council and privately owned properties within the city. This in addition to other capital investments, including our window replacement programme, installation of P V panels, E B infrastructure and social areas, amongst other initiatives. The strategy has been developed in partnership with key stakeholders, recognising the risks and challenges and aligns with the Dundee City Council's strategic plans, including net zero transition plan to be a greener city, made of strong communities, where people feel empowered, safe and proud to live. I see the first question and comment from Bailey McPherson, please.
Thanks, Convena. It's with regard to next actions on page 41, number one, which reads, continue with the E W I programme, including decisions about how to deliver I W I cost effectively in those solid wall properties where E W I is not possible. And if I'm being really honest, I think this has been a, a next action since Frank Laclede Victoria was on the throne. I mean, I've been going on about the whole issue of internal wall insulation for a very, very long time. And what I'm really seeking is an assurance from officers that elected members will be kept updated with progress proactively. And the reason I say proactively is I found out that the first of two pilot houses in the Logie estate, which cannot get E W I and would have to have internal measures. I found out that the first property has been selected, but that's only because I queried on behalf of the neighbour why a property was sitting for, empty for longer than one would expect in an area where, quite frankly, turnover because of demand tends to be very, very, very fast. And I'm told that that has been earmarked for intern, the internal wall insulation pilot and that the second pilot in the estate is yet to be identified. So what I'm seeking from officers is that not just for me, but for all elected members, that we will be proactively advised of things happening as and when they happen and not have to find out about them frankly, a little bit third hand. Thank you, Convena.
Yeah, thank you. And sorry to hear that was the situation in that one. I'll bring in Elaine, if that's okay, in the first instance.
Yeah, thank you, Convena, and thank you, Bailey McPherson. Apologies for that information not being circulated to ward councillors. We'll certainly take that on board and ensure that that information is, is supplied in advance going forward. I'm very hopeful that the, the pilot will give us good information that allows us to develop that programme of I W I. And it has been something we've been working on for some time, but we've been focusing on the external wall insulation programme, which has been very successful. And I would hope that we'll be able to deliver similar success through the I W I too.
Yeah, thank you for the reassurance you offer a lot with the elected members, Bailey McPherson?
Yeah, I, I, I agree with Elaine that we want this to be a success. Part of my issue all along has been, quite frankly, the fact that I W I has been pretty much shoved to the back of the queue. We've done a whole lot in terms of E W I, which we all welcome. We all think has been really successful and there's, there's council housing in my own ward that has benefited from E W I. But certainly the, the, the need to proactively keep us updated regarding the pilots. There's, I think there's another property elsewhere as well as two in, in Logie would be very, very welcome. And in particular, being proactively advised of the outcomes of the pilot would be very much appreciated. Thank you, Convena.
Yeah, thank you. And I think the outcomes is really important to fully understand the benefits for that to the, the tenants themselves as either way has done for many, what I've said, over 5,000 within the city so far. So thank you for that. Councillor Malone, please.
Yeah, I, I'm sure committee recognise I'm a bit flippant at times, but I would like to thank Mark or whoever it was that put the pound in the meter to provide heating for this office, which is normally an ice block. So thank, thank you for that. Can I just ask a question about the E W I? Because I've got a constituent who's been trying to sell her property and it's been declined because the works in Charleston have not been signed off. I'm, I'm, I'm just wondering whether or not we could get an update on the signing off of E W I because obviously constituents have got concerns about, and they are coming. And you're always going to get this. This is not an attack, but you're always going to get this with big project bills that there'd be people that are unhappy. So I would like some clarification on that, whether all the work's been signed off and at what stage in the process does that work get signed off? My second question goes back to the comments by Mark about the welcome analysis of need of tenants. And for as long as Bailey McPherson's been talking about I W I, since I came on as committee, I've been talking about the king of things like window replacement projects. And I'm, I'm pleased to hear that, that, that there is consideration of that. My, my question around this is, when will we be given information about the targets? Where it's going to be? Because I can't keep going into people's houses that are riddled with damp and I've got waters coming in, old frame windows. So it'd be helpful as a ward councillor, if I knew what the targets were for my ward and then I could share them with the people who raise concerns. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. I, I think the, the first question is probably a bit too complicated and, and it's part of the movement for this evening possibly. I think I'll get the officers to come back on that. But the capital plan programme certainly could be handed out to all elected members so that they are aware of what's happening within their own wards. I don't think I has an issue with that. And I'm sure Elaine will be quite happy to make sure that's distributed. But I'll bring Elaine in again with the, the two questions that are there, Charlie.
Thanks very much, Convena, and thank you councillor Malone for the question. If you're, if you're willing to drop me an email with the address of the particular property, I'm happy to look into the specific circumstances of that property and also to give you an outline of the approval process so we can, we can share that with you. In relation to your second question, happy to look back at the programme and to, to, and, and the capital plan is currently being refreshed and will come back to committee. So once that's done, we can give you a more up to date position on those programmes.
Thank you, Charlie. Okay?
Yeah, thanks, Elaine. I do appreciate how complicated, and Mark said at the start, how complex the question, rather than complicated question it is. My constituent has written in to council officers about this situation, or I've got her written in as well. But I, I take, I always take Elaine at her word. And what I'll do is I'll get in touch with Elaine and give her the details of the accommodation. I won't name the individual, but I'll give you details of the accommodation because it's not just a, a single flat. It's a kind of four up and I'll do that. I'm more than happy to do that.
Perfect. Thank you. I see no further questions or comments, so I'll take this as agreed. Thank you very much. Next one, Veronica, please.
Item number five, Rapidary Housing Transition Plan Review of Year Four. May to your ask to. May I ask to note the content of this report?
Thank you. Councillor Coleman, you're in there first. Okay, I'll bring you in first. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Convener. Funding from the Scottish Government for Rapid Rehousing Transition Plan was some four hundred and fifty seven thousand in twenty twenty one, but drops substantially to two hundred and seventy one thousand in both twenty one, twenty two and twenty two, twenty three. Has the Scottish Government indicated the rationale for this substantial cut? And given the continuing challenges in this area, has there been any commitment given by the government to increase the resources back to the twenty twenty one level? And also, are officers are at all confident that the elimination of the use of B and Bs can be achieved in the short term?
I think Elaine will bring you in now then.
Thank you, convener. I think in relation to the use of bed and breakfast, I would agree that the the situation is unprecedented within the city. You know, we have prided ourselves in the city not having to rely on bed and breakfast, but due to the situation nationally, the pressures within the system, we have used bed and breakfast more than we would like, but we're working very hard to reduce that and we will aim to reduce that as quickly as we possibly can. And you'll see we've done that through the increase in temporary accommodation, furnished units, and also by flipping tenancy so that tenants don't have to move when they get allocated those tenancies on a permanent basis. So trying to build stability into the system as well. In relation to the funding, I'll ask Louise Butcher to come in just to outline some of the work that the funding is delivering for us.
Louise?
Yeah, thank you for that, Elaine. In terms of the funding, section four of the committee report and then latterly in the appendix sets out what the funding has been used for. So conscious that the Rapid Rehousing Transition Plan is a package of funding over five years. And it is one aspect of funding in terms of tackling homelessness and providing housing options across the city. More specifically targeted around Rapid Rehousing. So we talk about housing first, which we've successfully mainstreamed across the city in partnership with health and social care and third sector partners. And we've also delivered initiatives into the private rented sector, which has included rent deposit guarantee schemes and rent in advance schemes. And there's been partnership working with third sector partners such as Dundee Women's Aid to deliver gender specific temporary accommodation and support. And there's also been focus here around homeless prevention and an allocated prevention officer, for example, within Dundee City Council within the final two years of the plan. And so only some of the initiatives that the Rapid Rehousing Transition Funding has essentially funded and really our focus moving into the next year is looking at our new sustainment prevention and homeless strategy and actions associated to that in terms of the learning from the Rapid Rehousing Transition Plan.
So, it's on your question, Daniel.
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you.
Yeah, I think I'll take the opportunity here just to say a good, a great thanks to the team themselves. And I think the team under recent years have been put under a lot of pressure with Covid and various other factors that have been brought into the the script as such. And I think they've done a fantastic job. And the report does recognise the positive work. It's also going on across the years, as you've said, Louise, over the next twelve months and the targets within that. And whether we're flipping properties, buying new properties within the thing, we'll put the ship through, as we know, with a number of new homes due over the next few months. And I think that's just a strategy which highlights what the good work we're doing within the city. And also the PRS challenges, but there's obviously something up with our control, the challenge of me putting the private rented sector. And I think the recognition of that and all the work that's been done by the officers to take on all the challenges head on should be applauded. Just to throw that in there for a second. Comes from McHugh, please.
Thank you. I have a question, but first of all, like to make a comment. I recently visited the Lily Walker Centre. And I don't know what I expected, but I was very pleasantly surprised at what I found there. You know, the whole, the layout, the atmosphere and the very supportive and caring staff that I spoke to. Were obviously doing something right. I've I've visited there a number of years ago and it was a different picture then. So again, you know, I know there's good work being done there. And it was very reassuring for me as elected representative to see, you know, what was actually going on at the Lily Walker Centre. So well done to everyone who's involved in in that project. I have a question. I found the plan really a wee bit difficult to navigate. There are three items in the contents page that don't seem to have corresponding sections within the plan, but there were, in the report, it tells us there were four key aims made out at the beginning of this plan. And I couldn't identify an update on two of them. And I wondered if officers could perhaps answer these questions. Did we or have we reduced accommod, temporary accommodation places by around a hundred and fifty units over the plan? Or will we? And did we or will we create fifty units of supported accommodation over the term of the plan?
Elaine, would you be able to answer that or?
Convener, I'd be grateful if we can bring in Louise Butcher. And we also have Michelle Harrow, the service manager on the call too. So she may have some more information that she can share with councillor McHugh.
Thank you. I didn't see Michelle there. Louise, can you come in first?
Yeah, so thank you for the question. In terms of temporary accommodation, so three point one sets out capacity within the appendix. So there were three hundred and eighty five units of temporary accommodation available at the thirty first of March, twenty twenty three. Now, this is approximately a twenty five percent increase from the temporary accommodation stock at the baseline position, albeit a reduction from the five hundred and twenty four units that we had at the end of year two. And really, the the original intention of the plan, as you see, was to reduce it by the hundred and fifty units. But then, as a response to the pandemic, a significant amount of additional temporary accommodation was created to mitigate the no permanent lets that were being made during that period. And most additional capacity was met by creating additional temporary furnished flats. So ultimately, no, we haven't met the target in terms of reducing the level of temp by a hundred and fifty. But I would note at the point of writing the strategy, we weren't in a position that we knew of a Covid nineteen pandemic, nor the impact that would happen on the back of that in terms of the pressures for temporary accommodation. So it is something that we're tracking. It is still our aim to reduce, albeit the timescales have changed in light of the challenges that I've just noted. Similar reflection, though, in terms of supported accommodation. And so the original plan set out that we would look at the reduction of temporary accommodation and looking at changing the accommodation as required based on demand in terms of supported accommodation. I'll be able to confirm the exact number that we've transitioned, but I would note that, for example, we have mainstreamed housing first, which is an outreach intensive support service, and housing support service. We've also, as I noted in my introduction there, around gender specific supported accommodation that is delivered as part of our temp model. But I would look to just bring back to members the exact numbers in terms of the supported units after committee, if that's okay.
No, it's fine. Thank you. Michelle, would you like to add anything to them?
Yeah, just just to add in as well that we also have supported accommodation for young people aged sixteen to twenty one. And we also have supported accommodation available for people who are leaving prison. So there are a number of different accommodation types available to support people. There's always room to do more. And I would suggest that the current review that's ongoing would be looking at how, where the gaps are and where the need is and how we address those.
Yeah, thank you for that. Dorothy?
Yes, I'm happy. Thank you very much. Thank you both.
And thanks for your feedback, Dorothy. I think that's really helpful for officers to hear that the elected members are taking a bit concerned with regards to what's and taking on what's been done within the city as well, within certain areas. Well, thank you.
I would recommend all elected members go and visit these places. You know, it's really worthwhile.
Well, let's see who takes on board. Thank you. Okay, thanks, Veronica. There's no more questions, so we'll take this one as agreed. Thank you.
Thank you. We now move to the final item, tenders received by head of design and property. This is for your approval.
Just a number of tenders for roof replacements, wifi upgrades and shelter complexes, which I saw was getting done today in Highmarsh, Luffin Newland, Kirk Street Multies and environmental projects. Any questions or comments? I don't see any, so we'll take the report as agreed. Thank you. Can I just say before we finish committee, if that's okay, I'd like to wish Louise all the best. She's going off shortly. As we know, this will be our last committee, so I think the committee would like to wish you well. And looking forward to seeing you again next year when you return. And also, I have an EMB on the way as well. And you have two of them to take care of, so you'll be quite busy anyway. So all the best for the new year and the end of this year. So thank you. So that's the business for this evening. Thank you very much, everyone. Thank you, convener. The final committee this evening is the City Governance Committee.
Good evening, folks. We'll just crack on. Veronica, over to you.
Thank you. Item number one, declarations of interest. Are there any declarations?
We'll take it as given that any references to organisations like leisure and culture, the usual caveat for members that sit on that. So if there's no others, we'll move on. Veronica?
Thank you. Item number two. Council plan mid-year progress report. This is for your approval.
Thanks very much. Yeah, hopefully it's self explanatory. Obviously, we considered the report previously in terms of the council plan that sets out the strategic direction, a key series of KPIs, I suppose, key performance indicators. Sorry, I'm doing the acronym thing. And this is the midterm update through the first year of those plans. You'll see there's a number of highlights. There's also plenty of room for improvement and the focus through these reports is continuous improvement improvement and making sure that we are monitoring progress against all of those despite all the challenges that we face. So I'll just come straight to questions. I think I'm right in saying, Craig, you are first.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, convener. Just looking at page thirty of the committee papers regarding the three year target for the percentage of customers using self-service options is stated to be seventy one percent target. Just wondering, given that the latest figure is around about ten percent less than this, are officers achievable that that target, a confidence, sorry, that that target is actually achievable in the timeframe? And personally, I'm assuming that there probably comes a point in all of this where encouraging self-service use amongst those not doing so currently becomes harder because probably you get down to the people who either are not online at all or who maybe they can't afford to be, for example, or they're simply just not comfortable in doing anything online.
Yeah, thanks. I'll come to Andrea to respond to that. Andrea?
Yeah, so the target at the moment, we're sitting in the middle of year two. So that's sixty one percent. And then year three, at the end of year three is the seventy one percent. So I would say that we're making good progress towards that. And there's a lot of work going on about moving to apps and different other online transactions are being simplified and put through just now. So I would say that we're on track for that, to meet that target.
Okay, I'm grateful for that. And just to kind of re emphasise that I do personally wonder if there comes a point where, you know, you 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 simply are just not going to get more people to do online because they either can't or they don't want to.
Yeah, which is probably why the target is not a hundred percent, Craig. So I think the reality is.
I'm trying, I'm slightly.
I think.
I agree with that.
There will always be a cohort of people that want to provide or interact with services in a different way. And you're absolutely right. So we've got to keep as many options as possible. I think partly it's driven by convenience, of course, and I know as a customer, I suppose, if that's the right terminology to use of Dundee City Council, I find it far easier going through the online portal than I do trying through the switchboard, et cetera. But it's it's in many senses, horses for courses. So you're absolutely right. We need to make sure.
I'm not going to comment on the switchboard feedback that I've been getting, so let's just carry on.
Thanks for the question. I'll, Pete, if I can take your question first and then we'll come back to your amendment. So I'll take your question and then I'll go to Charlie and then we'll come back, if that's okay. Over to you.
Yep, I think you've missed Dorothy in there as well. She was between me and Craig.
I apologise. I absolutely have. Pete, you're right. Dorothy, apologies. I'll come to you and then I'll come back to you, Pete. Sorry.
No worries.
Actually, thank you, John. It's not actually a question. I should have written comment, not question. So if I may. This report, I think, shows a reasonable performance at year two with fifty percent of priorities on target and a further around about thirteen percent within five percent. And I just wanted to say, this is a, this is a clear and concise report. It tells me what I need to know. It gives me an update on progress in this reporting year as well as an overall performance across the five years of the plan. And it highlights areas of concern. This is just what I need. So I'd like to express my appreciation to officers for all the work in pulling this together.
Thanks, Dorothy. I'm sure that will be welcomed and you are a ray of positivity this evening, which is always appreciated during these meetings. But I think it's worth commenting on that because as we've continued through this process of bringing these monitoring reports through in different forms, I think they've been refined again through officer feedback, but also through elected member feedback. So it's it's really good to hear that it's given you what you need from that kind of scrutiny process. And I'm sure Andrea will feed that back to the team. So thank you for those comments. Pete, back to you.
Thanks, convener. My question is on the visitor numbers to Dundee. Obviously, we've seen a huge swell thanks to the big weekend effect. I'm just wondering if officers could tell me if there's been any consideration towards the tourists using the tourist lobby powers that the Scottish Government has now given local authorities to try and boost the coffers a bit as we look to increase tourism to the city. And just to reassure you, my amendment won't be about that. It's not an entire can of worms. I'm opening tonight. I'm just wondering if consideration has gone in.
Yeah, we could have say, first and foremost, I think I'm on the record of saying that I'm keen to explore what that looks like for the city. Of course, it's not a panacea. It will not solve all of our problems or challenges, but certainly at this point in time, additional revenue and those that are using services and infrastructure should make a contribution to that. So absolutely. I'll come to Robin just to offer a view and then we'll come back to you in a moment in terms of your amendment. So, Robin.
Chair, I can tell the officers are monitoring the rollout of the legislation and other local authorities. Clearly Dundee has a far lower proportion of tourists than other council areas. But we have, we are keen to continue to explore this at an appropriate time, bring back a report to committee.
Thanks, Robin. You okay with that, Pete?
Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
Okay, I'll circle back to you in just a moment. So Charlie.
Thank you, convener. It's a comment, not a question. Andrea raised some really important points about non-participation. When we have a rate of non-participation in year two of twenty nine percent, that is almost one in three of the public. And I'm sure Andrea and her team are working hard to learn lessons about why that occurs. Some of these things we can't help. People are getting fed up with online surveys. And there is a fatigue. I see it at the university as well, it's a fatigue. But it would be at some point in the future, if Andrea could come back and explain if she can't already, but I'd prefer if she came back later on, give her a bit of time to come back and say, what's the analysis of the the uptake and what lessons can we learn going forward? I don't think that's controversial. I just think it's something that we would all want to know is what would be good practice. Sometimes we look for the big figure and we forget the real questions are about the smaller figure. So I just wanted to thank Andrea for her contribution and look forward at some point in the future coming back and talking about the lessons we've learned and how we might do it differently, if necessary.
Thanks, Charlie. Thanks for your comment and your supposed question there as well. Because I think it is important that we continually look at how we improve things. So there's a range of reports that will come back through committee in terms of providing that kind of feedback. And I think the report that I always quite like is in the format of you said, we did, which actually gives a clearer illustration of some of the feedback that we've received. I think it's also important to say, and then I'll perhaps defer to Andrea if she wants to come in and say anything else. At this point in time, not a hundred percent of services are available online. So of course, not everybody can do everything. So of course, not everybody can do everything through the online portal, although there's a significant proportion of services that are accessible through the online portal. But Andrea, anything you want to come in and add to that?
Sorry, I think, I think I'm confused about participation, because I'm looking at participation rates for sixteen to nineteen-year-olds. But maybe I'm looking at the wrong query. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Charlie?
Sorry, I thought you were on about customer using self-service.
That's what I, that was what it was about.
Sorry.
And the fact that we've got a figure of seventy-one percent, it was a seventy-one percent. And as I said, that's not criticism. I understand there's lots and lots of reasons why people choose not to participate in online surveys, et cetera. But what I was just asking is what we learned from this project we've undertaken? And a good feedback to committee, you know, what we'd like to do, what we'd like to see improved? And what can be done to ensure that we meet our targets of connectivity that we've set out? So it wasn't just specifically about sixty to ninety-year-olds. It was more about the overall headline participation rate.
Sorry, apologies for that. I misunderstood. I just had participation rate and I went to the wrong thing.
No, it's okay. Andrea, it's okay. I have this very, very bad habit of short noting my comments. And I think I've said something that I maybe haven't. So that's my excuse for getting out of trouble. So it wasn't a question, but I was just, I'm sure, and John cleared that, John answered that basically by saying, yeah, of course, that's going to come before committee in papers in the future. So there's no really, it wasn't a criticism. I don't think there's any to come back. It was just a request.
Thanks, Sean.
We're happy to look at our online and the transactions online and what works well, what doesn't work well. And we're happy to give some feedback on that. Obviously, when we move transactions online, it's about trying to make them easier for people to do online. So less clicks to actually do the process. So there's a lot of work goes into that. But we're happy to feed back some further information and we can pick that up separately.
Thanks, Andrea. Okay, well, Pete, I think we'll circle back to you and I'll let you speak to your amendment. And if I can also ask committee services to circulate that as well. Thanks.
Thanks very much, John. I'll wait for it to appear or be circulated before I speak to it. I don't know if it's appearing for anyone else, but I'm just seeing a black screen from Veronica at the moment.
Yeah, I am as well. It is in folks' email inbox, but I know it can be sometimes a bit of a fart jumping between screens. So I think we'll try it again to display it. But if you want to maybe talk to it, it's not a lengthy one, Pete. So I'll just let you talk to it and then hopefully we'll get it on screen ASAP.
Yeah, thanks very much, Convena. So it is just a short amendment. It's regarding what's pointed out areas for improvement in four point six and the reduction of number of modern apprentices, graduate apprentices and work experience graduates currently able to be offered by the council. As someone that found their feet in Dundee through a modern apprenticeship, although admittedly in the private sector rather than the public sector, I know what excellent schemes they are. And it was disappointing to see that we are probably going to miss our target on that. And so all the amendment is asking for is to write to the Cabinet Secretary of Finance with the report requesting additional funding. So at the very least, we are able to meet our target. And as I'm sure we can all agree, at the moment, we need as much talent in the council as we can possibly get. And by not offering the amount of apprenticeships and work experience graduates that we want, we are potentially losing talent into the private sector. So I hope we can get agreement from the committee tonight towards my amendment. Thanks for that, Convena.
Thanks very much. Pete, I'll come to Kevin and then I've got a question for officers. So I'll, Kevin, let you come in.
Convena, I was hoping I might not have been able to come in or wouldn't have been requested to come in. I was hoping that there would be some level of agreement on this. You know, it is a very positive thing that Pete tries to do for the city. And obviously, it's highlighted in the report as a shortfall. And, you know, it looks to address that. We're not looking to score political points. We're looking to get young people into employment. And, you know, I thought that was the aims and objectives of us collectively as a council. So I would hope that we're really going to have to go to a vote on it and it's agreed.
Thanks, Kevin. You jumped the gun, because I didn't say I disagreed. I said I had a question for officers. So in that vein, I just wanted to clarify one thing in terms of the suggestion around the funding of those various opportunities. And can I perhaps bring in Robin Presswood? I've had some really positive engagements with employability. And I'm just keen to get a sense check, I suppose, in terms of the level of funding and that focused work on employability. Because I think we've all been, certainly those that have interacted with the service, been very positive about its role and the fact that we've brought those various teams together to support them. But I'm keen to understand from an officer perspective, the work that's underway in terms of providing that little bit of context. So, Robin, can I bring you in, please?
Chair, happy to do so. In terms of the focus of the amendment, it is youth employability and modern apprentices, I believe. Whilst there are some aspects that are supported by city development, the primary focus for apprenticeships sits with corporate services. So I'm not sure whether Francis Gregg or Robert is on the call and could pick up and go into more details. Just before I hand over, I would say that there is a corporate employability review, looking at the fact that we have three employability teams within the council and considering how we can optimise that and perhaps deliver better results for the same resources that are available. So the role that youth employability and modern apprentices has within the overall employability mix is currently under view with the hope that we can improve the overall performance of the council within current resources. But I'm not sure. I can't see whether Robert or Francis is there just to pick up the specifics around modern apprentices.
Thanks, Robin. That'll probably suffice, actually, in terms of a response. Thanks very much. That's helpful, just for that contextual piece. I'm more than happy to write to anybody to ask for more resources for the city, as I've declared and mentioned several times. So I'm happy to accept that with one caveat, which I think you'll be in agreement with, Pete. So a piece of work that I've been working very closely with the convenor Stephen Rom on is around that broader employability and economic piece and specifically focused around levelling up and leveraging as much in terms of resources as we possibly can. As part of the work that was undertaken, there was a bit of a twin stream approach, which was not just looking at capital funding, but also revenue funding. It was also looking at creating employment opportunities. So within that parameter of work, there are some specific focuses around looking at utilising, leveraging up for employment and also for skills and training. So with your agreement, I think I'd probably add in a letter to the levelling up minister, who I met with very recently online, to convey that and just to make sure that we're pushing at every door for additional funding. I'm sure I'll come back to you, Pete, to see if you agree to that. And then hopefully that's a unanimous approach.
Yeah, more than happy to agree with that, John. Like you said, any door that we can bang on should be banged on.
Perfect. Thanks very much. With that, if there's no voices of dissension, I think that is unanimously agreed. Thank you very much. Okay, Veronica.
Thank you. Item number three, capital expenditure monitoring, twenty twenty-three to twenty-four. The committee are asked to note the position.
Yeah, again, hopefully self-explanatory standard update report. I'll just go straight to questions. Fraser?
A more comment than a question. I love this particular matter, because it is minor. I let it go last month, but I see the same wording has appeared this month. And if there's one thing in life I don't like, it spins. So let me explain what I mean. We've noticed a further decrease in the likely capital outturn for twenty-three, twenty-four. And that's for understandable reasons. I'm not being critical. I think we all know the reasons and the challenges facing the delivery of capital projects in the current climate. However, it's the sentence in three point one which reads as follows. It has emphasised that this is not an underspend insofar as the net figure of five point eight one six million will still be required in twenty-four, twenty-five and funding from borrowing and grants and contributions in that year. Now, we just politely remind officers, this is a capital expenditure monitoring report for twenty-three, twenty-four. It is obviously self-evident that somewhere down the line through slippage, we will spend that money, but we will not be spending it in twenty-three, twenty-four. Therefore, it is slippage. Therefore, it is an underspend. There's absolutely no need for this sort of spin in reports. And I really do think with respect, I would ask officers to perhaps drop that sentence from future reports. It was in last month. It's in this month. It's crept in, I think, Convena. It should creep right back out. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Fraser. Can I perhaps suggest that we choose our words carefully? I don't think it's appropriate or helpful to perhaps accuse officers of spin. It's not the terminology that I think any of us should indulge in, particularly on a formal public meeting. I take the point that you make and I'm happy to ask officers to review that going forward. But I think we need to be careful about the language that we use, understanding the point that you're making.
Can I just come back on that? Because I feel that's exactly what it was. I don't believe for a minute officers have tried to in any way mislead the committee or whatever. But I think they have embellished a position. And I don't think there's been any malice aforethought or anything like that. But I do think we do have to be mindful of the fact, this is a capital expenditure monitoring report for twenty-three, twenty-four. And the question is, is there underspend in twenty-three, twenty-four? And the answer is yes, there is. And it should simply be left at that.
Thanks, Fraser. Stand by my suggestion about terminology. But Greg, do you want to come in and take that on board? Thanks.
Thanks, Convena. Officers, I'll reflect on Bailey McPherson's comments.
Thank you very much. Okay, I see no other indications of questions or comments. So can I take this report as agreed, please? Thank you very much. We'll move on. Veronica?
Item number four, revenue monitoring, twenty twenty-three to twenty-four. The members are asked to note the content of this report.
Then hopefully this is self-explanatory in terms of the detail it contains. Is there any questions or comments on this report? Nope. Can I take this as agreed, please? Thank you very much. Veronica?
Item five, communication strategy, twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-seven update. This report is for noting.
Thank you very much. Sorry, I was jumping the gun, Veronica. Yes, again, I think it's another report that is self-explanatory. But again, in line with other comments that have been made tonight, I think it's worth commending. And perhaps no surprise that the document is very well presented and contains a lot of really useful both examples and illustrations of the work that the communications team have been undertaking, but also their broader support for initiatives and opportunities, I suppose, for the city. I think of note, it's really important that we also recognise that citywide role that the communications team have played, whether that be in relation to previous instances over COVID pandemic times or more recently around the work that's been undertaken across the board on cost of living or the wider promotion of the city. So they've done a fantastic job, actually, when you think about how small a resource in terms of bodies on the ground they are. And I really want to commend the report and hopefully you will join me in doing so. I will come to Fraser first. Fraser?
Thanks, Convena. I completely concur with the view. I think the communications team, as I've said before, I think they do an excellent job. The quality of communications has vastly improved in recent years. And I think that's in no way anything other than the hard work of the communication team staff and well done to them. I have a specific question regarding an action on page ninety-one, which reads, identify and implement a metric for monitoring the level of engagement with city council corporate social media accounts. And I'm just really wondering if we could have a little bit more information as to what that actually means in practice. I am assuming the communications team try to ensure a quality of, if you like, consistency, frequency of use and quality of all the council's social media accounts, of which there are obviously quite a number. Because obviously, we want things to be consistent and always of a high quality. And I was just really wondering what this metric actually consists of. And does the team ensure that we have that consistency right across all the social media accounts that the council has?
Thanks very much for the question, Fraser. I can see Steve, as if by magic, has just appeared on my screen. So Steve, over to you.
Hi, yeah. Thanks for the question. To answer, so over the last few years, we've been building our audience on social media. So the amount of people we can reach, but that's only sort of one part of the picture. We also want to consider, are they interacting, is probably the word, with the information we're putting out? Are they scrolling past it? Or are they stopping to look and read and do the things we're asking them to do, to click or to participate or whatever? The platforms are all very different in terms of the quality of data they give you. And Facebook is by far the best. It actually has an engagement metric, you're probably aware, Bailey McPherson. And we just felt it was a gap in our monitoring. We were enjoying the growth and taking consideration of the fact that people are more likely to follow you if they value the information you're giving them. But it wasn't enough of a picture. So we've just delved a layer deeper into the engagement metric.
Thanks, Steve.
That's very helpful. Yeah, very helpful indeed, Steve, and I'm grateful for the response. Thank you.
Great. Thanks for the question. Wendy?
Hello. Part of my question has just been answered, so that's handy. But I also noticed on the page about the communication strategy action plan that it says, and it looks great that there's two hundred and thirty-seven percent extra followers on TikTok. However, there's only one thousand and forty followers. And the videos have massive gaps from February to April, May to September and then to November. And the comments are turned off. So I was just wondering, how is that connecting with younger audiences, as stated in the action plan? And the stat of a hundred and twenty thousand ad plays on the digital bus stops. Is this what was promised by the company or what has actually been played due to so many of them being smashed?
Okay, two questions in there. Steve, I don't know if you'll be able to answer them all, but.
I can. Yeah, thanks. Yeah, I'll do my best. On TikTok, early stages is probably what I'm saying about TikTok. Is it, we're all finding our feet with that. It's a very different platform. I think we've been talking as a team a lot about how the other platforms are similar in their content. You can use content in different ways across them. TikTok is completely different. So we're having lots of conversations about how we develop content for that platform for younger audiences, but not just. I think across quite a lot of demographics, folk are starting to adapt to TikTok. So we need to as well. It's a bit of a journey and we're just on it at the moment, working out what works for us. Also on the comments, but about how we can make sure that we're keeping an eye on all of the platforms, which are now five, six, seven platforms we're trying to keep an eye on and that there's nothing egregiously inappropriate going on there. So we're just finding our feet with TikTok and that's why it's in the action plan again for next year, just to keep that kind of progress going. In terms of the ad plays, I can honestly say that every play is a bonus. We have no contractual arrangement with them at all. During COVID, they offered us that space that they don't sell as an added extra that allowed us to get largely COVID information out to the public during that period. And we've just developed that relationship. So it's not something we have targets for or we're given. We just see it as a bonus and we use it as one of the kind of key drivers of reaching audiences that may not otherwise be online.
Thanks, Steve. You happy with that, Wendy?
Perfect, yes. And as an older TikTok user, I look forward to seeing more videos.
You and me both. Grand. Thanks for that. Dorothy?
And as an older person, I hardly know what TikTok is. And this is relevant to my question. You'll not be surprised. Four point four in the report talks of a shift to digital by default. And I understand why this is the way it is. But it also warns that feedback from communities means we must also use more traditional inclusive communication channels to reach those who are not online. I couldn't find much in the way of detail about this, these alternative inclusive channels within the report. So could I ask if officers could perhaps provide some detail in a further report at a later committee?
Perhaps a later update, but I'm sure, Steve, if, do you want to come in and add anything at this point?
Just to say that, yeah, we can absolutely do that. There are a range of things. As you know, we work closely with the Fairness Commissioners, who give us a lot of feedback about different channels we can use. We've just launched some radio adverts relating to cost of living, because we see that. And we've been told that that's an appropriate channel for audiences that aren't necessarily online. We're very thoughtful about those channels and we do our best to cover a multitude of non-digital channels as well. We're very thoughtful about those channels and we do our best to, to cover a multitude of non-digital channels as well.
Good, thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Yeah, we could perhaps, uh, again, as an addendum or certainly an addition to the report that's before you. Um, Stephen and the team, I'm sure will be able to provide, and perhaps a brief note that contains some of that information. Uh, just so you've got it at your fingertips, Dorothy, because there's some really great examples. Steve's mentioned a couple there. I think cost of living is probably certainly in my mind, one of the best examples. Um, you know, it doesn't matter where I go, I see the information, signposting people, uh, to, uh, the service and, and what's available, which I think is helpful. Um, but there's always room for improvement, I'm sure, and Steve and the team I know are more than receptive to that. So thanks very much for the question. I see no further questions. So can I take this report as agreed? Thank you very much. We'll move on. Veronica.
Item number six. Dundee advice strategy update. The committee are asked to note the content of this report.
I think this report is really worthy of, um, commendation actually, because there's a hell of a lot of work that has been undertaken. Uh, not just by the services that are named within this report in terms of that, uh, that, those support services, but beyond as well. So if you consider the significant impact that these services have had in supporting people, uh, very often in very challenging circumstances, financially speaking, uh, to the tune of fifteen point one million pounds, that's fifteen million pounds of additional money coming into the pockets of people living in this city on a daily basis. And again, much of that comes through interaction because they are, uh, in challenging circumstances. And as we know, whether it's in the advice bureau or Brooks Bank or our own services, um, there is, uh, again, an extensive amount of signposting in wider supports and also an assessment and understanding what other issues perhaps, uh, are live in that person's life that we might be able to support. And it's, uh, never the case that somebody just comes in, uh, with, uh, one issue and we send them away. It's always a case where the teams are looking really comprehensively at that household, at what the ability is for them to leverage in and increase their income. Because one thing we do know is our ability to increase that household income is one of the ways in which we can alleviate some of the challenges that people are facing through cost of living crisis and the other financial challenges that folk are facing. So, uh, I think this is a fantastic report. It really illustrates the value, uh, across these services. And as I say, um, that is just, uh, the value associated with these specific services contained, uh, within, uh, the advice strategy. There will be others that will be working across our cities, out of community centers, out of libraries, et cetera, that will also add to that or that are signposted. So, uh, again, I just want to thank all of those staff that are involved across those organizations, because I think it's incredibly important that we do everything we possibly can to maximize income, to alleviate uh, the strains and the struggles that are facing people, uh, particularly now and particularly as we're going into the winter months. Um, so forgive me, Dorothy, I think that was from the last question. So Michael's first and then I'll come to yourself. Sorry, I'm trying to get myself in the right order. Michael.
No worries, Convena. Thank you. Um, I and the rest of my group were pleased to see the older people uptake campaign mentioned on page one hundred. Um, I'm just wondering what's the time scale for undertaking this and kind of what's the targets and measures of, of, um, success in this increased uptake?
Thanks very much for that. Um, I think Jackie Capel is on the call. So Jackie, I'll defer to you.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, and thank you, uh, councillor for the, for the question. Yeah, the time scales are, we hoped to, hoped to have this completed before the thirty-first of March twenty-four. Um, we've started with, um, some ongoing communication just now. Um, and we've got information out in sheltered complexes as well as online and in community centers as well. Um, our target ba- is basically to increase the number of, um, older people who are receiving council tax reduction. We don't have a set number in mind. We just want to try and maximize it as much as, as much as we possibly can and get that reach out to everyone. Um, but well, it'll be a continuing thing. It won't, it won't have a start and end as such. We'll just keep that, that communication going to ensure as many people who are entitled to the benefit are actually claiming the benefit.
Thanks, Jackie. You happy with that, Michael?
Yeah, uh, anything that we can do is also very much welcomed. Thank you.
Great. Thanks very much. Uh, Dorothy.
Thank you, John. Um, continuing with my positive trend this evening. Um, this is a real success story, isn't it? Um, in relation to the, the cost of living crisis that we find ourselves in at the moment. Um, fifteen million pounds of gains for Dundee citizens is indeed impressive. And huge thanks have to go to the Citizens Advice Bureau, Brooks Bank, Scarf and Aberlauer, and also to our own in-house, um, council advice services. I've heard from constituents, uh, in my ward about the help they've received from some of these agencies and also about how they've been treated with kindness and compassion during very difficult times. So well done, everyone involved.
Thanks for those comments, Dorothy. Absolutely agree with you. Um, it's tremendous what they've achieved. And again, if only we had many, many more of them, um, that would be ideal. But thank you for your comment. Uh, Lynn.
Thank you, Convena. Um, I was waxing lyrical last month, um, about, uh, Chris, who's working out of the Morgan with the cohorts, um, across, um, the, the, uh, the feeder schools as well. And there was a ding ding last week because he got his first, um, two hundred thousand pounds into the area just through the work alone that he's doing with the school. So obviously everybody's absolutely delighted. Uh, and my question is, um, will this be replicated in other parts of the city? Um, one of the reasons that I don't ask about it in the first place was, um, the improvement service had produced a document during COVID. And it talked about the fact that, you know, outreach is sometimes the most important thing that we can do and actually meet people where they are. So the fact that, you know, schools, sheltered housing, all these places are so much easier to find people and have these conversations. So, um, I know that they're doing great work across housing to make sure this happens. So just to, to find out, Jackie, if, uh, we're going to be rolling out into the wider school, um, family with regards to, to having the support there, please.
Excellent. I'll come to Jackie in just a moment, but you're right to highlight that as a great example, actually, of taking those services out to people. And I know we'll all have examples of that within our own communities as well. And they're listed within the report in terms of some of the other uh, work that's underway in places like, uh, Carsview and in our schools, et cetera. So there's a real tremendous push, I suppose, to make sure that we're connecting people with the advice at the point at which they need it and the place in which they need it as well. So Jackie.
Thank you, yes. And, uh, thank you, Lynn, for your, uh, your words around, uh, Chris in, in Morgan. It's much appreciated. And I'll make sure that these are, are passed on. Um, yes, there is, there are plans to, to roll out the model that we are, uh, piloting in Morgan, um, to a further two schools, um, Craigie and Braveview. Uh, and we hope that to have this in place very shortly.
Thanks, Jackie. We'll look forward to seeing them up and running. Uh, Siobhan.
Thank you. Um, ju- just a comment. I mean, greevy Dorothy is, it really is a kind of a massively positive advancement. Um, but I want to kind of just call out the, the welfare advice and the health partnership progress that's happening. Because I think that fits in with what, um, what Lynn was saying as well. It's about kind of going to the people there. But I think that kind of connection is really important, especially at these times, because what we have is this sometimes a disconnect between the health of people and the poverty that they experience. And but having that kind of welfare structure within the GP service, uh, services, I think, um, kind of integrates that understanding that health and wellbeing and poverty and health, generally speaking, are connected issues and that we should never perhaps kind of divide those two. I think what's happening there is, is actually, as, as some of the comments are saying, it's actually really bringing kind of that to the fore and allowing the health issues to be supported. But in addition to the whole poverty related issues that the patients are, are clearly experiencing. So I think it's an absolutely brilliant initiative and I'm glad to see that there is an increase in the number of practices there as well.
Thanks, Siobhan. Certainly echo those comments. And again, uh, as we know from the work that's been undertaken through the fairness leadership panel as well, all these issues are interconnected and, uh, we need to take that kind of multi-pronged approach to all of those issues because we know that impact and poverty also has a positive impact on health and wellbeing and, and mental health as well as the physical health. Uh, and likewise, uh, all of these things, as I say, are interconnected. So thanks very much for that. Uh, and I think that's the last comment on this item. So, uh, with all that incredibly positive feedback, can I take this as agreed? Thank you very much. Veronica.
Item seven, secondary school service servers. This report is for your approval.
Again, hopefully relatively self-explanatory in terms of the IT infrastructure required. Can we take this as agreed? Thank you very much. Veronica.
Item number eight. IT desktop transformation. This is for approval.
Again, fairly self-explanatory, I think. I'm not jumping too quickly, but I see nobody rushing to the keyboard. So can I take this as agreed? Thank you very much. That is the business. Have a great week. Stay safe and.
Sorry, Convena. Oh, there's another item.
Also, there is Gordon. Click my agenda too quickly. Apologies.
Item number nine. Provision of insurance covers. This report is for your approval.
Again, hopefully self-explanatory in terms of the detail. Can I take this as agreed? Thank you very much. Now it's all the business and this comments from before stand. Have a good week. Thanks, everyone. Cheers.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Good night.